Okay, that motion carried by both. Uh, next item is bid opening for the auctioneer service. If we go. Something in there?
This is from McKee Realty and Auction. Bid for auctioneering service. McKee Realty and Auction will auction City of Sulphur Auction at three percent commission. Will furnish auctioneer, auctioneers, clerk, and cashier at auction companies expense. Will write up auction flower and all advertising and place same and advertising media agreed upon by auction company and city manager. Will distribute auction flowers and mail out to buyers on auction company mailing list. Postage on mail out to be included in city advertising expense or mailed by city. City of Sulphur will pay all advertisement. City of Sulphur will line up all equipment and miscellaneous for the auction as advised by auction company. Any other agreements will be upon usual, approved by the city manager and auction company. Respectfully, Al Katt.
Basically, what we're seeing there is three percent plus postage and advertising.
Okay. This is, in reference to your notice of auctioneer of your merchandise, I have a closed, like a closed contract for five percent. I look forward to working with our city and coordinating a date for the auction. One, from, uh, one little general auctioneer.
Okay, we have a discussion on.
Does he, does he say anything about postage and advertising?
He says, uh, auctioneer fee five percent. Auction service will provide all forms and manage system at low cost to the city. Clerk's fee provided by city. Cashier's fee provided by auction service. The other person is provided by city. So he will provide a cashier and an auctioneer for five percent.
Does anyone care to discuss these bids? There seems to be a great deal of difference in the services provided, uh, and not a great deal of difference, of course, in the fee. No need to discuss it, study it any more than what we have.
Okay, it's two and a half percent.
Three percent. Three percent plus the postage and advertising, which is gonna, I'd say with, without longstanding contacts, he has a better made than this than anybody, just about anybody. So he'd reach more people and that's what he wants, the buyers here.
Miss Al. Well, this is a very low bid at three percent anyway, so probably never be the one to go with, unless someone sees something, uh, should be discussed or talked about otherwise. Here, most accept the low bid.
I would accept, um, please.
Okay. A second, if you would. Go.
Board one.
Aye.
Board two.
Aye.
Board three.
Aye.
Board four.
Aye.
Board five.
Aye.
Okay, that motion is made, carried by both. The next item on the agenda is one that gave me a lot of pleasure. Uh, we started last month with the presentation of the employee of the month award. This month, we have received that award, Billy Bark. She's been with the city a long time and I know by personal observation for several years, she's been doing a great job. She's always there, she's to be relied on all the time. And if Billy would come up, I'd like to make this presentation. Congratulations, Billy. I know you.
Thank you all. I'm glad of the opportunity to express my appreciation for my gal for many years.
We appreciate you.
I went to work on it in the fifteenth nineteen seventy six. I appreciate it too much. Thanks, you all.
Thank you, Billy.
Uh, next item for consideration, the Hilda Oklahoma Tribe.
My good gentlemen, uh, I'm representing the Hilda Oklahoma Tribe, House Committee. Just to bring you up to date on what we're doing, we've been working with several of the, uh, city committees been working with us, Mitch has been working with us, the police department, uh, all forms of government, the county, we've been working with the state and Howard, girl. Today, we got forty-two entries in the triad lawn compared to last year, we had thirty. And we're anticipating, last year, we had about thirty-five participants. This year, we're hoping for somewhere between two hundred, uh, whether, whether committee. I think everything is, uh, is coming along on schedule. We've had several organizational meetings and we'll have one more meeting the sixteenth of, uh, this month and the triad lawn itself will be set into the twenty-seventh on Saturday at that morning. And, uh, we would request all the, uh, all the help and assistance that we could be appreciated from the city.
Also, uh, I was asking about the senior citizens back and also the rescue club, about forty-five minutes that morning.
Oh, that's right. The, uh, that morning, last year, we ran into a problem mountaintop point. The swim begins early in the morning, uh, and we have to register a lot of the participants and we had a lighting problem. We're gonna start, we're gonna start the event thirty minutes later than last year, where that should help sun, but we're still gonna need some lights down there and I don't think we're gonna be able to run enough electrical cords and get enough floodlights and things. If we could, uh, we'd like to use a vehicle, uh, the rescue truck was mentioned because one, it's, uh, it'd be nice to have it out there anyway in case of emergency. Two, it's got all the lights we would need. Uh, we don't only need that vehicle for, uh, until daylight from about, uh, six-thirty in the morning until, uh, seven-thirty, hour, an hour and a half. Provide us a little bit of lighting and some more.
Senior systems needed.
That's right. We're, we're gonna try to use a busing system to try to hold down the traffic on the point road and, uh, we'll try and get hold of several vans. Several churches have donated the use of their vans. We're just trying to locate six to eight vans that we can use to shuttle people back and forth instead of, instead of having so much, uh, traffic on roads like here. Be a little bit helpful, yeah.
If the council approved, I'll do the driving for us. And we have, we have to take the rescue, we have a lot of, and take care of that. Or maybe just call about that.
You have somebody to take care of?
I'll just move it, we have Meg to coordinate with the, um, advocate any assistance that the city could offer, along with funds, put as a factor in. So.
As long as we can avoid with trucks.
Board one.
Aye.
Board two. Board three. Board four. Board five. Board five.
Aye.
Okay, that motion is carried by both. Next item, uh, is two of them, a thousand one hundred and three dollars for local participation fiscal year nineteen eighty-six, eighty-seven to the Southern Home Development Association. I think that they have a lot of thought, but they give us a lot of help in the past. I'm sure that, uh, we've had a lot of help, uh, and everything that, uh, very involved in, I'm, uh, for, uh, gets, and what else have you been on in discussion?
And we, uh, we've been districting this for now with years, haven't we, Al?
This is from out of general fund.
Same, same, well, it's actually special, I'm sure.
I'd make a motion, go ahead, this page, so, uh, we hear. Second.
Do you wish to make a second?
Board one.
Aye.
Board two. Board three. Board four. Board five.
That motion carried by both. Uh, I had another man in discussion, a possible action on line, clerk, David Burke, to attend the district, clerk, prosecutors, finance officers conference, October eighth, end nineteen eighty-six, for those ladies' birthday. Would you like to tell us something about that, uh, voice I had?
Well, this will be my first time to attend either be Melinda and I or Nina Rosso and I or Doran and estate. I believe they have reservations out at the door, you just go into your classes. I know I have attended a couple workshops and I definitely do. Don't, and we can just, uh, pick up the expenses while we pay and get reimbursed.
I'm sure there's something to be evaluated, especially, uh, to version through, uh, I think it'd be a good idea. I'd like to make it, we approve this.
What kind of stuff?
Uh, what is it, what's on here?
Uh, I have not received anything, uh, which I don't know exactly. I do know that the firm has to be certified and I have to attend so many workshops to be done.
They usually give you the right rates.
Yeah, just what you do.
On a basic action expense, like, uh, state, I'm gonna straighten up, make whatever that is, I'm gonna take that off.
Uh, I'm just trying to get proud, that's, uh, before council.
I'd move we approve this workshop for city creatures and clerk.
Second.
Motion, second, uh, vote.
Board one.
Aye.
Board two.
Aye.
Board three.
Aye.
Board four.
Aye.
Board five.
Aye.
That motion is carried by both. Next item is discussion of sinking fund schedules and sinking fund estimate of needs for fiscal year ending June thirtieth nineteen eighty-seven. Could you give us a explanation for that? Somebody else?
The auditor is supposed to be down. Uh, the sinking fund is to reimburse the general fund for the, uh, Mace case, repay out of the general fund, so they levy, uh, I guess a bond, uh, to the county and it will go on a property taxes and then over a three-year period, you'll pay back the general fund
You have any questions? This is a discussion. This is perhaps, uh, just for information that I, this is just for information, not for actual action.
Well, actually happens is this particular item, like, the judgment is, is issued by the court. Those people that don't understand, we have to take the payment out of the general revenue and thereby creating us a problem, so we're allowed to put this one at the border, actually reimburse us for that cost. So those people that are sitting on those juries issuing those judgments in favor of those kind of cases or suits need to understand that, that it's going to be paid by the owner. We have, the city has nothing to do with that, so that's the reason for this and that's the reason. But I don't, I'm sure, I don't know how they offer it here and I'm sure that's why. So only, I mean, how the sinking fund is when there is a suit against the city, I don't know, or other items, I'm sure there's, uh, I think that right here is.
Okay, maybe you all, so get here later, go, uh, explanation.
Plus Paul, you still.
So, it's table eleven, so, uh, hold on a second. Uh, number nine is discussion of possible action on city attorney, Tampa Oklahoma Associate, uh, municipal attorney workshop, except for the seventeen Oklahoma City. We don't have a system type of others, so, I don't know who wants to take it, so.
He said he'd be here at six, but.
He'd be here at six, okay.
Well, this is a yearly item that they do, we, you know, like, information that aren't hard, sure, there's a familiar with it. And we've always approved, man, you know, if they care to know.
Now, these sound like it's two things together.
I think it is.
Well, it's all one deal.
I'm not sure if you checked it, but it appears to be. Right, relax and, uh, go on, this, force of a sudden.
But I would move, I would move that we approved the penny. I second that.
Okay, that motion is made, second, you, help vote.
Board one.
Aye.
Board two.
Aye.
Board three.
Aye.
Board four.
Aye.
Board five.
Aye.
That motion is carried by both. Number twelve, discussion of contract, with pay was calculated, authorized to mayor, to enter contract, and allows contractor to start working and designate pay for all eight, have eaten for the City of Sulphur to make purchase, fact, and ten. Would you like to give us some?
We have contracts, lots here, I can probably.
Oh, let's go, give them a few. So, may we?
He gets started real soon, though, the officer will, I already seen it, stay clean on. We're ready whenever, like, you get all the paperwork, I'm ready. It's like we, we have a full preparation, if I'm with you, we'll wait for that, uh, or we'll, in some way, like, we'll, 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 we'll.
Okay, this is what we use, motion is two, go.
You'd like to approve, uh, with feel, after feel of case?
I'd like much, we're pretty subject to everything being in order.
For a second.
We, we need to also, uh, on that, we need, on that tax exemption, uh, exemption, we need to authorize, we need a resolution to, uh, authorize you as a agent. So I don't know if you have that resolution in there or not, do you?
No, I hope like, we can get it, uh, this, and that, it's always been had.
Right, but we need to, also, we need, we need to authorize you.
Jim, I would, I'd be right, I knew.
I think it's kind of a standard, two dollars, sure, yeah, and, uh.
Just authorize those persons, materials, you want to steal.
We need, including one of the, we're playing the option, then we do, uh.
All right, that would be good, yeah. Do I have a second, Bill?
Second.
Okay, you want to make a second, you have a vote.
Board one.
Aye.
Board two.
Aye.
Board three.
Aye.
Board four.
Aye.
Board five.
Aye.
That motion is carried by both. The next item is discussion of possible rule of the BFW, uh, Halloween carnival last week of October nineteen eighty-six. This is something that's been done in the past, uh, do you, do you have some?
I have a little bit of inspiration on me. I'm Jean Hood and I'm here representing the Sulphur Business and Professional Women's Club and this is an annual event and we're planning the Halloween carnival for the last of October, um, the date is, uh, October the twenty-fifth. And, uh, we would like for the council to act upon the proposal. Um, the proposal being that the Biggie Wavy Club will have the carnival on Saturday, October twenty-fifth, beginning about five P.M. and running through about nine P.M. Could be a little bit later, in some half-things ago. And that West Muskogee from Cooper, extending east to Highway seven and part of West Second Street, be roped off for this event. And this is an annual event and a very needed one for Sulphur. And we would also appreciate the assistance of the Sulphur Police Department and help with this. And at this time also, uh, since the Sulphur Biggie Wavy does sponsor the, uh, Halloween carnival, we do sell weed sites to different individuals, uh, who wants, whoever wants to, uh, make money or whatever. And, uh, I think that's all that I have.
I think the, uh, uh, annual Halloween carnival's done a good thing for the kids and various organizations that participate in that and it is fundraising. Uh, I don't know of any specific problems that we've had in fact, that you mentioned we had any problems last year with, okay, as a downtown merchant business. Uh, we've not had any problems that I'm able to leave. I would move that, uh, we let this go on as, as passed the best.
Well, I would too, but we need to coordinate this with the police department so that, uh, in the past, they have designated that certain day, so that we don't have a continuing Halloween trick or trick, you know, for about a week.
This was the last Saturday in October, it's really not on Halloween, but we can provide this, we can sponsor it, you know, other than a Saturday night.
Right, well, what I'm saying is sort of the police department can designate their particular nights with y'all so that, that they can go door to door and whatnot and you will have a door to door for about three, four, five hours. I would say that's true, yeah.
Okay, that's motion is made, second, you, vote, please.
Board one.
Aye.
Board two. Board three.
Aye.
Board four. Board five.
Aye.
Okay, that motion is carried by both. Our next item is discussion of possible actions to advertise for pitch for three, uh, three thousand feet of two-and-a-half-inch fire hose company. Uh, we've discussed this some in the past and I think, uh, informally, too, of the, can you give us a status on that, please? I think we just, uh, just talked about it, didn't we?
We said aside money and how we're ready to share.
That has been decided, I'm pretty well. I think it's probably something that's necessary. Might as well go ahead and, and get it while we have the money to do it.
That's true, we share.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I've already visited for that already.
Yeah, I make a motion, we advertise for being.
Yeah, second, yeah. We have one, please.
Board one.
Aye.
Board two.
Aye.
Board three.
Aye.
Board four.
Aye.
Board five.
Aye.
Okay, that, uh, that's carried by both. The next item is new and unfinished business. We have the, uh, hold, uh, no, it's not the same, not the other. Holds the one-way tables. Oh, yeah, okay, yeah. Uh, yeah, we need to have some discussion, uh, some explanation on the sinking fund.
Um, I'm David Hart and I represent the city council. Um, and, um, the sinking fund budget we prepared for you earlier in the year, well, in August, and all it is, is, it's for judgment that was incurred by the, the city paid for its past year and the city paid for it out of general fund, but, um, city elected to pay, to collect taxes on this judgment for three years. And during those three years, that money will be raised out of the sinking fund and at the end of each year, it will be transferred to the general fund, paid with the general fund back for paying off the judgment at the end of year. And, um, all it does, it just shows, there was no cash in the sinking fund at the beginning of the year July first and there will not be any cash until you collect your current tax roll to come around, collect taxes on January, December, January, and on throughout the year through June, June, June thirtieth of nineteen eighty-seven. And it was a real small amount, the total tax levy on the sinking fund was three thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty-nine cents, and that's on page six of six. And it, it charges the taxpayers, uh, the City of Sulphur additional twenty-two mils, which is very, very, very much. I would, I couldn't even estimate how much it would be for a tax code, tax property owner in the City of Sulphur, but I would say it'd be a dollar, two dollars, which is fucking tank. But other than that, answering any question, we don't have any doubt.
Okay, at the end of the fiscal year, the money's been transferred to the general fund, the City of Sulphur.
Right.
And the balance is again zero and the money's again collected.
I'll notify the board of what needs to be transferred to the general fund. The total sinking, the total judgment was five thousand something dollars and, uh, that'll be charged over three years, so whatever, by, by, by that for a year, the amount, seventeen to eighteen hundred each year is going to be transferred from the sinking fund into the general fund to pay back the debt of the general fund.
So we're beginning the second year of this?
You're beginning the first year, this is the first year of it.
That's a principal plus interest.
Principal plus interest, right.
Thank you.
Right, going to charge here, wasn't he saying that?
Well, I wanted to tell you here that we were going to, we're getting a session to cover the pending litigation, but since we've been here yet, I guess we might as well either take a break or go directly into the.
Mr. Mayor, under new business, I would like to.
Motion.
Something was in the newspaper.
Go ahead.
I have, as Ray House of Insurance rented an office space from Murray County Insurance, who the city does buy insurance from, on various things. I, in no way am connected with Murray County Insurance, other than I do have an office from them. And I wanted that to be noted, probably to have checked with Phil and he said, as long as I receive no monetary reward from that association, there's no conflict of interest to me, I'm receiving, matter of fact, I do pay a monthly rent, I have a home phone, nothing's changed about my business except for my location.
Any other questions on that? Uh, one on that, that line, uh, my wife has accepted a job with the Chicksaw Library, uh, system in the local library and someone brought up the possibility of, uh, conflict of interest or. conflict of interest or, uh, some connection between the city and the library. She is employed by the library, uh, system and I think, uh, Phil's contacted on that. I didn't talk to her personally, but he said there was no, no reason why not, such a no direct connection between the, uh, the hiring and the, uh, the operation library except a very lucid formal and partly informal ring between the city and the library system. I just thought I'd bring that up to clear it off so that I have any questions. Anything else need to be brought out?
Mayor, I'd like to bring up a day on where we could go to start on this road program. We, we propose to start at I G A, go a block south on one, on Seventeenth Street, take a block east on Wyandotte and a block back north on Sixteenth Street. And that's where he would like to start to do the preparation around that. In talking with him, I mentioned the fact that we might have to do a little more work there other than just laying the blacktop. So he's agreed to go in there and tear that up and relay the, uh, foundation under it. If we would, uh, haul off what he couldn't use and haul in what he needed extra, and this was in agreement all along with me. So if he starts tearing that up and, and ran like it is, we've already bid chips to be holding here X number of dollars. And your crusher run, East and South Crusher run should run two, three dollars cheaper buying it and hauling it than the chips are put. We only have the two trucks to haul in, which are just four yard trucks. If he gets it all tore out, we need to move on that pretty fast. So my suggestion would be go ahead and get a, whoever got the bid to haul some crusher run in, get that down, get it packed and go that way. Now, we can haul it, it's going to take a little longer for two trucks, two small trucks. Then after we leave that, we're going to Westmore Callister from Seventeenth Street to Carver Drive. We've got to take some of that out. And we'll go from there to Seventeenth Street and Seventeenth Street to Tenth Street. And if I haven't missed something, Fourteenth Street South, we'll get everything on the west side of town and we'll move across town, if that's all right with y'all.
The other thing I had is on, uh, we've got about three different places on Fourteenth Street and one place on Seventeenth Street where our sewer project on thirty-year C D V G crosses where we planned on overlaying. And I talked to Dan Loomis back there today about the possibility of really doing a survey and figuring out where those sewer lines need to be laid so we can just do that ourselves, get those sewer lines in there so that we don't have to go and contract or cut up our asphalt after we've got it laid. We'll try to get that cord taken down, see if you should be able to do that.
We'll, we're going to schedule a survey to come down here and start laying out probably everything. A little bit of the first thing we do is get that figured out, see if that's going to work and what's involved in there.
If I've been to y'all's approval, well, that's what we'll, that's our duty. Anybody have any questions on that?
Y'all want to go into the executive session and that kind of thing, it will be here or if there's anything important that's going to be?
I just, I just put, I didn't talk to Phil and I just took that on there because I knew we had pending litigations, I thought he might bring us up, you know.
Why don't we take a short break and, uh, make sure I go directly to, uh?
I would agree with you.
Exactly.
Recession. Recession.
Yeah, I'm going to recess for ten minutes.
Recession.
Four one.
Aye.
Four two.
Aye.
Four three. Four three. Four four. Four five.
Aye.
Four five.
Aye.
Legger, self-commissional party, trust meeting is called order. Said agenda, uh, excess approval of regular special trust meeting minutes, approval of June, August purchase orders, approval of collection of pledge before, approval of straight report of financial statement. We have a discussion on any of these items, any approval? Any questions? Air motion?
I like motion except.
I'll second that. We have a vote.
Yes, sir. Four one.
Aye.
Four two. Four three.
Aye.
Four four.
Aye.
Four five.
Aye.
The next item, this is presentation by Stephen Sanders on second year C D V R.
This is just the second page on C D V G audit for the program here nineteen eighty-three. It was dated May first nineteen eighty-five, first received your fund through July thirty-first nineteen eighty-six, it's going to close out. Second page is to end that, I'm watching available interim board. And then the page, third, third page is our audit count through fourth, that's our opinion on the, on the audit itself, it's a kind of qualified opinion and it states that we examined financial statements in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and that everything appears to be presented fairly, status of funds, the city of software, July first, first count, that says. The next page is the statement of source and sta- status of funds. And this shows what we've received for this specific, um, period of this grant. And it shows that the total program here nineteen eighty-three funds are allocated to recipient for, for two hundred and twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety-seven cents. And then the city of software matched locally ninety-seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-four cents. And this amount totaled three hundred and twenty-five thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-one cents. And it was also all spent by city for the property, sewer project. We have two notes on page three, it states that the total allocation, seventy percent of the program total was two hundred and ninety-six thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars, however, in two hundred and twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety-seven cents, complete the property. And then note two stated the total allocation, thirty percent, thirty percent of the program total, which was the matching part of the city, was one hundred and twenty-seven thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars. And, um, it states only ninety-seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-four cents, complete the property. So we were basically, we were having our couple allocation on both sides. Page four is the statement of program cost and it shows what was authorized and what was suspended through July thirty-first nineteen eighty-six. It was all for construction, engineering, inspection fee, general administration, and audit itself. And that totaled three hundred and twenty-five thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-one cents, disagree with the total on page three also. Page five is our notice of financial statement. The only note that we have is note A, it's an accounting policy, it's just states the city uses the basis of accounting prescribed by the Department of Housing and Urban Development for community development block grant recipients. These records contain accounting information as to the amount of the grant award and their related authorizations obligated to them, obligated balances, asset liabilities, and income. And we have additional information. We have account and send report on additional information, this just states that other information that goes with the program under HUD. And there we go. The next page, page seven, and it starts with comments on compliance and internal control. And our internal control, we say that, um, the first three paragraphs are just mainly what internal control measures we're checking and what we look for. And then on the body, the fourth paragraph, it states, based on my state of data, western city system of internal county control and my review of its compliance with contracted term regulations, policies, and procedures which was made for the purpose set forth in the first paragraph of this section, I observed no material weaknesses or evidence of non-compliance with paid requirements. Page A was our compliance with sta- with sta- statutes and regulations on the community development block grant and HUD requirements. And we state twelve things that were required by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. And through the twelve of them, we did not find anything that was wrong with any of them. We have done this, we have done several other C D V G grants with the city of software and we have always, our files have been maintained, computer files have been maintained, and we did not find anything wrong. In fact, this was probably the best one we had done because it didn't, uh, we didn't have many other things to look for, we just had, there wasn't anything like purchase of driveway or purchase of property or anything, it was just mainly use of water sewer line and the engineering fee. And there was only two change orders for the original bid led by, um, C N M, construction ability, J N M. And those two change orders from Manamond, they had all their supporting documents actually that. And other than that, it's twelve comments. Um, if you'd like, I could read them to you, but I think they're, they speak for themselves. I don't want to bore you too much. But other than that, that's it, we think, we cling on it. Thanks. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good luck out of the head of the board.
The next item is President, uh, discussion of possible action or policy to adjust water leak gallons. Uh, begin.
Well, if the customer has a, a bill showing where they have a water leak and have had it fixed, we, uh, adjust, adjust that bill and, uh, override it, have it discussed with the council, decide what kind of policy they would buy from there.
That's, the policy in the past has been for the city manager and his discretion to adjust the bill for people that fall approved. I just felt like that as a matter of record that the councilor don't have a set of matter policy. My feeling maybe is that rather than adjust the bill for a customer, that it would be better to let them pay now. But that they wouldn't be required to pay it. That makes them responsible for their leaks because if it's going to get adjusted, we'll want to fix it, you know, or put out fixing it as long as you can.
Anyone else have any ideas on that?
We, uh, we have some disparities, I guess you'd call it, relevant. Whatever, but, uh, this one particular lady brought her bill in and was, she had a leak, apparently, one month her bill was a hundred and ten dollars. And her sewer part of that bill was twenty-two dollars. And the sad part of it is, she just even hooked on to the sewer. So she's being charged, you see, they're charged twenty-five cents per thousand for that water and, uh, then accordingly her, her sewer bill is higher also. So, uh, there's quite a discrepancy there, in my opinion. And of course, when the, the, the rates were raised, it was my understanding, even when we discussed that, that there would be twenty percent increase. And of course, what it's amounted to was twenty percent on the mineral bill plus, plus twenty percent on the user and on the amount used. And what it's wound up being is approximately an eighty to a hundred percent increase as opposed to a twenty percent increase. Now, we are in, in dire straits and we needed money for our budget, but it was my understanding that we only needed a hundred and ten thousand dollars for our general revenue budget. And I realize we need surplus, you know, we need all we can get. But many of these people that are contacting me, uh, feel that, that it's, it's too, too high, too much, uh, according to the way that the increase was applied. And it was applied overall on the garbage and, uh, sewer and, and water also. So, uh, due to that, it can put a good burden on some of these people. And, uh, I, you know, I realize that we certainly needed an increase in our order of sewer rates, but it certainly placed a great burden on those people. And I really feel in particular instances like that, well, that lady's not even on the sewer, she hasn't even used software sewer system. And her bill is twenty-two dollars for the sewer. That is, that's just not right, in my opinion. And certainly not if she has a leak and then the sewer bill is running up from her because of, because of the leak. So, you know, some of these are going to have to be individually looked at, you know, somewhat. My first adjustments on a situation like that, where just anybody comes in, their water bill was dull or left outside faucet on, whatever goes, goes through that meter, that's what they need to be filled with. Now, if they can work out, I feel like we need to give the city manager enough leeway where he can work out a payment in six months, whatever it takes, collect that bill.
One thing that was brought to my attention was the fact that during summer especially, uh, people were using a lot of water on the lawns, yards and whatnot, and they pay on that additional sewer fee, which, uh, is not exactly right. But we had nothing to do with the sewer, so it might be best to make some adjustment at least on the sewer part of the rate.
That would be, that would apply to so many.
Right.
That applies to so many people that, and I'm, you know, my water bill was seventy-something dollars last month, you know, so I know how some of those people feel, that, that was twice. Well, you know, exactly, one time I had a fifty-dollar water bill, I probably, I let the water run in the garden or something like that. And so I, I, I feel for those people and I understand, uh, if, if we, if we take into consideration that water is used out of doors, is not going to be a great point. We're taking in such a large number of people, it would be impossible to adjust those type of things on an individual basis for each customer.
Because some are not going to say anything anymore.
Well, it's true.
I, I would say first, we're dealing here with adjustments to water rates. The sewer thing is, to me, would be a different thing, well, I won't put that on the agenda for next time, but I would be in favor of putting a cap on the sewer charge, which would affect period with that, uh, water, water usage. Well, sewer rates should be set up, you should have got the sewer rate on the winter months. So the sun, the water, they're not, they're not going, you know, they're not going to put sewer on.
Right, right.
And, and. So the sun will be on the water. They're not, they're not going, they're not going to put the sewer on.
Right, right.
And when, when you just, oh, three, four months where you don't water, where your sewer rate should be set.
Can we put that on the agenda for next meeting in this special, next special RRE meeting, if anyone comes first, to discuss the sewer? I think that's a good idea.
It's set, I mean, the piece is set according to the amount of water that you use. And there's just not any way you can get around that. I mean, it's, whether it's winter, summer, or what, they're billed for so many thousands of gallons of water. And then they're billed accordingly on the sewer rate at twenty-five cents per thousand plus whatever the minimum sewer bill is, a dollar and a half, no, two and a half, whatever, two and a half plus whatever, twenty-five cents per thousand. And, but I'm sure that the trust indenture has the procedure and the way and the method that we'll have to follow unless we pass a resolution or an ordinance that will change that now. If y'all want to have the attorney draw up an ordinance or if y'all want to pass a resolution, that would then adjust, you know, whatever the indenture or the charter says. And I think that's a procedure we, that's, he isn't here, but that would be my opinion.
I would be possible to have a fair rate for summer.
We had that one, one year. I know we gave a certain rate for summer users. And it was a cheaper rate than ours, we, you know.
Yeah, for us.
Yeah, so that we would have it sitting for a usable water.
Where do we get that on the agenda?
Let's put that on board. As far as, as far as this adjustment of water bills, I'd like to make a motion that, that all water bills be required to be paid in full, either immediately or on a payout period, subject to the city manager working with the customer. I'll say a motion.
Okay, once you've made the second motion.
Aye.
Two. Three. Four.
No.
Five.
That motion is very valid, sorry.
And reason, I vote my voting, because I think it's covered in the, 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 the charging necessary.
We'll take a little close look at it and make sure what was wrong. Next item is discussion of possible action on SMA purchasing used polycarts from the customer who resells. What is a policy present with you on that?
At present, we pay a little over fifty dollars for a new polycart and sell that polycart for sixty dollars, just a slight profit on it. They originally had let the people pay those out. There got to be a problem with people that leave, taking them and getting the whole order. What Silas had proposed to do on this is to buy used polycarts from those customers who leave and wish to sell them for twenty-five dollars. Resell those for forty-five dollars where the people can pay nine dollars the first month and then nine dollars a month for the four succeeding months. That way you reduce the amount of money you need to get in and start up from a hundred and ten dollars with about a fifty-dollar deposit plus a sixty dollars for a new polycart. So if we could get some new used polycarts where if they want to, they can use those. We could let them get in for just fifty-nine dollars. And we'd be making more profit on those which would cover any losses that might come up.
Who would buy those?
The sanitation department.
So Silas would buy them. Obviously, it's not a violence, got will in this in our, it's got all this fucked in the lid. For how much twenty-five dollars for one that's in good condition?
Right.
So given the, that motion we did there.
You now say a motion. Have a vote.
One.
Aye.
Two. Three.
Aye.
Four. Five.
Okay.
That motion is very valid, voting. Next item is discussion of possible action on the old Lakeview Country Club water line project. We have some maps in our package. Do you like giving us a map?
This is just a water, a water line improvement that we, we, we need. Dan, let me ask you a question.
The map that you have coming here is a reduced picture for your viewing of the proposed water line project that we've been working on with the city staff, trying to address the problem of inadequate water supply, particular fire supply recovery, and the Lakeview Country Club telegraph area. Most of you know the area is very badly undersized with our water. In fact, the Country Club and telegraph areas are served by two and a half and smaller diameter lines. The required type of that kind of line is essentially nonexistent. It's really not a lot better, it's somewhat better in the Lakeview area. You have four-inch lines that are being fed from long distances off of other four-inch lines, which eventually tie into larger lines. If you, there again, you do not have adequate size for fire clubs. And I would imagine during peak demand period, you'd also notice a little breakers, as a resident attacks during normal use. The area is a, an area with a moderate to above-average property values, if you will. And with the amount of property values there, the entrance rates ensure are significantly affected by the lack of fire protection provided by the water system. And again, in consultation with staff, we're looking at ways of providing water serves to change the situation in this area. The problem with getting the area included in previous or future community development block grant program, which is certainly advantageous, is that it does not meet the grant requirements, which stipulate that the neighborhoods to be assisted will be in the low to moderate income level. You know, the population living there would be of that, in that category. This area, of course, is not in that category. And would be somewhere around moderate to above. And so does not qualify for that, funding of that program. So trying to look at other ways that we can address this problem and come up with funding to alleviate the problem we have there. We've looked at perhaps a combination of funding with the city coming up with a portion and with the rest coming from the residents who would benefit by that. Again, that's a concept which has some merit and is one that has been used in other communities. And certainly is worthy of review here. The city does have its regular income from the dedicated sales tax. There is an excess in that fund at this time above what would be required for participation in next year's block grant program. The income for that at this time, if you correct me, is somewhere, I think a minimum of about ten thousand dollars a month and that, with some I assume there. So it is generating a fairly steady income and continues to grow. Now, we begin the project, the end of the period for the dedicated sales tax. Well, we've looked at the project that, as you can figure it on the map, would provide the needed hydraulic capacity to serve the area, provide the fire clothes that are necessary, and also provides the loop hydraulics which is necessary so that has supply from at least two different areas. This provides for better hydraulics and system, better flows, and also allows for supply to the area in case one source of supply becomes, has to be taken out of service for some reason or another. So you have dual feed system and so it's from safety and from continued service and a fire supply. Point of view is the best arrangement. We've looked at using a twelve-inch line along Williams. This is a section line road. And for the type of community you have here, the population density is a twelve-inch. It's really a minimum size that you want to look at for section line roads. We've also looked at an interior line, essentially following Country Club, using an eight-inch line. And that provides reinforcement for that area to take care of any conceivable fire clothes that you would need in that area. Also, along the Lakeview Drive, we've proposed there to put in an eight-inch line to, again, it's serving as a feeder between the twelve-inch on Williams and the small nine-inch line down on Chickasha. And this would feed into all the four-inch lines which presently serve the branch streets all over Lakeview. The cost of doing this type of a project with today's market, we've put together a cost estimate, which I believe is included in that package that the councilor's had. And we've just gone through the list, got the materials and estimated unit costs, which would most likely obtain competitive bidding process. Again, we'll check those against other projects that we've bid recently and even confirm some of the prices with area contractors. So we feel fairly confident that the project could be built for that. With the competitive market there is right now, it's a good possibility that bids could come in even less than that. There are other factors there, construction and engineering. Inspection we propose would be by the city and city project. So we don't want to transfer funds or anything for that. Right-of-way acquisition is kind of an estimate that in driving the project, looking at it, there's really not going to be a lot of additional right-of-ways that are needed. Most of the lines can be placed in existing right-of-ways. However, there will be, you know, there's only a few places that may require some additional right-of-way to be obtained. So we have allocated some acquisition funds in that. Of course, any kind of right-of-way acquisition and that sort of thing are going to be some legal costs involved and that we've put that in there as well. Also, the, there's nothing on the legal services budget here to, for the council to prepare an opinion, which would have to go to any lending agency or bond company or whatever, and depending on what type of fund financially is useful for the project. So, and then of course, some contingency money. I would entertain any questions you have about the project at this time or its configuration, the cost, or whatever. And then I want to talk just a moment about some of the financing alternatives. As always, any kind of a project like this, the, it's hard to come up with cash upfront, take care of all of the, all of the capital expenditures that need to be made. The city does have funds available in its special earmarked fund for that purpose. But of course, not enough to pay the entire cost of the project. Similarly, if it is decided to pursue the project in the manner which was originally conceived, that is with the residents who are affected by it, coming up with a portion of cost for the project, the obviously funds would have to be collected over some period of time. Again, if you participate all at once, it would be a heavy burden to place on anyone. And so financing alternatives have been plugged into. At this time, really the most advantageous rates and the simplest financing available for a community like Sulfur is probably through the Oklahon Water Resources Board loan program. What they've done is they've put together a multimillion-dollar bond issue. They have two of these out at present time. And the bonds are sold by the Water Board with full faith, full faith and credit of the state of Oklahoma behind them. Therefore, they get a very favorable rate on those bonds. And then they can loan money based on those funds that they've received from bond proceeds at very favorable rates to municipalities or other public agencies. There, presently we have, like I said, two bonds out. The oldest one is a bond they sold last summer. And it's a fixed-rate bond and it has a present rate of eight point nine four percent. The, the other bond that they have is one they have just concluded the sale on. In fact, they have not set a final rate on it for the present, but I was advised by the members of the Water Board that the rate will most likely be in the neighborhood of five point six percent. Now, the catch to that is it's a variable rate loan. The bond floats on whatever the bond market is doing during a six-month period. There have been indexes based on other bonds and how they're performing in bond sales for the past six months. And this is revised every six months. At present time, the market is edging downward. So it's expected that the next cycle will probably be somewhat lower and that there will be adjustments down. Historically, as reported to me by the Water Board, these type of bonds and indexes have not gone above nine point two percent at any time, even when the prime rate was, you know, twelve percent or above. So it's still a pretty favorable interest rate. And even though it's going to, no doubt, fluctuate and float on the bond market, it, it does provide a very favorable rate and you can take advantage of the favorable markets right now. The advantage of going to the Water Board as opposed to, say, floating a local revenue measure of some type here, either a general obligation bond or revenue bond or borrowing from some other source, such as Farmer's Home or something like that, is that the Water Board loans have almost no overhead built into them, such as typically if you go float a revenue bond or a general obligation bond, you're going to have to pay, the bond council is going to have to pay the bond, bond house, the sales house, all those. These can add to, you know, worth five to six percent of the project, just off the top. With the Water Board loans, you have essentially make an application for a loan, which costs about a hundred dollars. And the only additional cost there will be whatever legal services are required to prepare the opinion or title for any additional right-of-ways needed that are required. So it makes it a fairly low overhead form of financing. And again, the rates are fairly reasonable, particularly the newer loans. The terms, minimum term is ten years, maximum term is, for the older one, eight point nine four percent. It's twenty-four years, essentially one year of the bonds life has already been used up. So it has twenty-four years remaining. So you could borrow up to that term. The newer one has a full twenty-five years on it. Those are just some of the options. I've run out of some various calculations, looking at bond repayment rates and coverage and that sort of thing. I could go into that in a lot more detail if there's interest in that or if the council would desire this. Again, this, what I have tonight is primarily advisory nature. I don't know that any action has been required at this point. But it's to visit the project, look at possibilities, and show some of the funding that is available for that. And I would entertain any questions you want to have. We did that.
I, of course, I certainly hope that we could start including some of these areas into our approval programs because of the fact that, like you pointed out, the CDGT grant monies are the lower on their income. And of course, these people in these areas like that, this particular ones, the ones that we have in Sulfur, they're certainly entitled to some representation from this council on their tax dollar. In my opinion, and of course, at the beginning, when those areas are brought into our city, they should be. But that's neither here nor there. They should have been brought up to part, you know, as far as the, the surface, the water, sewer, and whatnot. But they weren't. And so for expansion purposes and that sort of thing, we certainly need to give it some consideration because we're locked in now because of... consideration because we're locked in now because of rural water. They've looked at us and, and it's towards expanding and so if we are going to entertain the thought of any type of growth in our community and development, we're going to have to give services and of course, in that area out there. And I realize it was, you know, an area that should have been developed prior to bringing into our city, but that doesn't alleviate the problem. So if there's any way that we can do this easily, you know, and we do have this, this one six six cell tax money and if there's any way at all that we could do it, then I'd certainly be receptive to trying to do something for it to be effective.
Close the, very reaching up the cost estimate.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Everybody else has dropped.
Everybody has a valuable chipper. The cost estimate, bottom line, completely contingent to everything was three hundred two thousand, five hundred fifty cents.
Some of those, I, I talked to, to the one person out there, he contacted me and of course, he indicated they would be willing to raise perhaps fifty percent. Now whether they will or can or have that potential or not, I don't know, but for example, I received a grant, for example, it's thirty percent. So if they raised fifty percent, actually we were going to be giving twenty percent more as opposed to what we're giving to the other areas and expenditure. And with the amount of tax that they pay and all according to other areas, then we could be potential growth as well and I think it would certainly be in our favor.
So again, the, our, our position at this point, you know, is certainly not on a safe, like, business of what you should do or how you should do it. We were, were asked to take a look at the potential project and put together some numbers on costs and things like that and we had done that and we certainly, this is I think more a point of departure for the council and perhaps the residents in the area to take this, look at it and then we can work with this and develop it into a viable project if, if that is the desire of council and of citizens. So we'll, we'll, we'd be happy to work with it in any way we can to adjust, make any adjustments that are necessary or to see this project through to any success in completion at whatever level the council and citizens want to pursue.
Thank you, and I think that gives a good rundown, I think you're talking about really making a bit of a rundown, but consider the options and appreciate the very good.
I think we need to input residents this area, perhaps maybe in the form of a neighborhood community and certainly share their struggles with them and perhaps make a, make a proposal or some kind of visibility, like how much air volume is out there. Help with this.
There, there are of course a number of ways that that could be done. Be able to add more taxes or require, or, or, and provide a people's share or, you know, there could be a, a water district repaired or special assistance districts. Again, the legal counsel and necessary management now to be consulted to help before the, those kind of details and give you much better advice than I can. Again, I, I can speak to the technical parts and the engineering and, and those types of things. And this, this does serve as a point of partner, I think, and at least a point of discussion where people will be impacted by it.
Certainly, thank you, Dan. I guess we're here to motion to, uh, table this before people who've got their name.
Do we need to contact the residents out there? Do they need to be made aware that we're considering this or in their interest? They may not even be interested in it at all, we need to find out.
Yeah, they are.
The representative.
Some of them are, but some of them may not.
Yeah, I, I talked to one guy, he was, he said, man, this is going to cost me, I'm not bored at all. But he said, my water's fine.
You know, this is, on this end of Lakeview, man. If his house were burning down though and he had a, he told.
He may not be aware of that.
But we need to, there needs to be some contact made with this particular neighborhood and, and let them know that we would want them to do something, they would like their, but I know some of them have made commitments, but we need something quarterly from them.
One of the districts that has made an attempt to go into the area out there and ask some of those that are interested to come back and maybe give a band and give us some kind of a vote for them to come back home and continue discussing. I'm there, so. Very, very, I work with them in all of this, I drill in other areas. I, I, you know, I, this, this person knows it's been a long time. I was the first one to oppose any type of expenditure in any area that came into our city that wasn't up to par and I thought that people told them, but nevertheless, what we're actually doing, you see, as time goes on, we're restricting and prohibiting those services that, that come in and buy later on, you see, second and third kind buyers of these property, these houses and all, and they didn't, weren't involved in this. And so it's kind of courtesy.
Okay, love it. Any motion to that effect? To instruct Mickey.
Perhaps there's an individual or two that would be out there that would be wanting to go door to door rather than making it, if this all, this all is set to be active. I, I consider that we, I'm sure we need to contact this.
Please, please. Set.
Motion, I'm excited.
Four one.
Hi.
Four two. Four three. Four four. Four five.
Home, home this map here, starting on Chickasha, ended up fourteen. Is that a six inch line or is that what you're talking for on Chickasha and going to William Drive? What size is that?
Twelve.
It's a twelve already existing there?
Yeah.
Have to put in the, the.
Yeah, but it's not tied in those other.
No, but those, those coming down.
Those come from Lakeview.
They're, they're tied in over this way.
Yeah, they're not Lakeview, they're just next to Lakeview.
The ones off Lakeview, they're just running down there about that, like, they're the block and stop. There's four of them, like, the, uh, what?
Okay, next item for discussion, discussion possible action online. I've got a thing to put in over the Indians, Nations, Chapter of the Office, I'll go first and second on City of Oklahoma. But is that, is that consistent?
We have a brochure and a package. It's thirty-five dollar fee for a day at conference and the primary thing they all would be talking about is land, which is, is, we see.
I'll make a motion, we'll let you go.
It's encouraging to go.
I'll say.
David wants to go second, go please.
Four one.
Hi.
Four two. Four three.
Hi.
Four four. Four five.
Hi.
Okay, that motion, I think, uh, careful. I have in the way to Google the twelve thousand, three hundred point dollars for eighteen annual payment to our local management service business. Does any deeper discussion, any questions over there?
That's about two thousand less on the effort.
Credit. Just our standard annual payment.
What was that actually? Was that, it says a debt replacement?
You have the, the grant there on that long page here.
It's a grant, so.
They have constructed eight thousand, but this is, you know, construction cost per place the credit that they outgave.
So this was actually for the construction replacement?
Right.
To repay, okay? I had just wondered, because I'd always tell, I'd tell, that's why we had to pay to, for the right to reserve the water. So we're allocated out of there.
Okay, any other discussion or questions? I, uh, motion to pay this to all the conservatives.
How many would I, I don't know, say you're.
Second.
Order.
Go please.
One one.
Hi.
Or two.
Hi.
Or three.
Hi.
Or four. Or five.
Hi.
Next item is report to trust by water, if there's anyone else.
Right now, we're trying to displace or kill all the smaller lines, you know, these streets are being overlaid. You got one here.
What about the Tulsa?
We're trying to kill all of it. Through stuff. Usually on this, on this last decade, they've been killed, but we've got many lines that feed off of going up to the other street, you know, that we didn't kill. And I've got to make a few plans and try to kill all those living people. Mostly you don't tell us where that means lines are leaving. We're trying, we've got some of them, a skull cap here, we've got to dig. We've got a lot of them, you know, we need to kill. It's just some of the cats that went to the delay hospital, things like that.
This was our situation, the water plant, and what we.
Well, we still need to do a little work on the horse and well.
That's about the only thing that has been brought up.
We've got to get out and fill that in and pour concrete around it. She's, and that, hold it around it, fill it up, concrete it up. We haven't been able to get in here in the last week.
Any other questions or comments?
We're, we've got quite a few meter rates that we're trying to get to. Just that, that tells me how to get these lines given.
Where do we stand on the installation of new layers?
Uh, I'm at Mr. Williams today and we're, he's working on, spads on it. Best way to bid though, you know. Say, you know, one of that, you know, this, the laborers want, want to go with responsible for and what we need. We'll probably have to buy some cutoffs and we'll start on those, to replace those that are, are broken.
Do you have a bid that's next to me?
He told me he gets them this week sometime.
We've got some sewer lines to lay across.
Yeah.
There's a problem. We're going to open.
He's going to, he'll get, he's going to have an engineer down. He said sometime this week, he shoots some grave on these. We've got two of them across fourteen street down there.
Three.
Three of them, you got one on the cage, cows, cows, no value. We've got.
Where's going to put them? Have a look at that.
I'm aiming to let this pipe in there and just count it on both ends until they come through with what he was talking about today. We've got to hit the shaft on both sides of the road, see how deep it's going. And this would be, most of them will probably have a manual on them, but they'll probably go over the edge and go out right, right.
Any other?
Yeah, Connor, what, do we have any idea about what it would cost the city to pump water?
Yeah, every month on the water, on the, the Water Board, they figured it, you know, that's, they just, that's figured in, no, that's figured, that's just figured in what chlorine and buying and stuff like that.
Doesn't take into it, to count the cost of the pumps and the cost of the pipes?
No, mine, no.
Just basically figures.
Basically electricity and chlorine.
Chlorine.
And, and, and time's passed, was that a?
Major problem?
Yeah.
Okay, when you have to buy a new pump, is that not?
Chlorine.
But it's, it's not in on that?
Well, you don't have that every month.
Well, but it looked like.
Yeah.
You group shake the equipment out.
It needs to be added into.
Was it much like when we had the last, what, that's well cost a hundred and seventy?
Thousand.
Thousand?
That should have been figured in on it.
And, and that was never entered into the cost of pumping water, right? So, so.
Well, it's like all those last we got on the last pump, I hear that thousand, I mean, pumped it down. Just say one hundred fourteen inch line, three, I don't know. But most of it on the, on the pump report is just electricity and your chlorine.
But that, like that last pump, it wasn't included in any kind of cost?
Hmm, probably that for that one month, the, the month that it was paid for, it probably put it in.
Okay, thank you. I think we, you know, sort of understand on that basis. Next item is discussing possible action on bidding landfill. We have had a, a contract for some, now we are still just working month to month on the old bid. Does anyone have any thoughts on that situation? Phil?
Well, you asked me to take a look at the existing contracts. The present, Santer landfill agreement was entered into on February fifteenth, nineteen eighty-two, it was a three-year contract, so technically expired February nineteenth, I believe March first would be specific. That, on that particular contract, the services were being, or were contracted for a dollar twenty-four per water meter per month. That, the contract has been in existence since that time. It is on a month-to-month basis at this time pursuant to your request. I went ahead and drew up a notice to bidders in regard to the landfill operation if that's what the council so desires. I have no idea, as I understand it, there are probably at best three operators of a landfill within a, an area that would even be acceptable and I think really just have two. You know, one right south of Paul's Valley, you know, and I may be wrong, assuming that I keep bidding, when this thing first came up in nineteen eighty-one or eighty-two, you got two other landfill operators, Paul Aaron, which is who we usually, at present time, and then Ant Carey, who has the landfill out between Sulfur and Davis. The, if the council desires to bid it, they need to give me some guidelines. I set it up for alternative bids, one year, two years or three years, so that the, whoever wanted to bid, can bid, bid each one of those alternatives, as an alternative. You certainly want to, whoever's going to be able to have a valid landfill permit and proof of insurance, which is I, I've put in all of that. And I would recommend in a bid like this, you require a certified check or surety bond, cashier's check, in some amount as a bid bond, to make sure that if you do award it to a particular bidder and he refuses to, to undertake the duty, that you have some measure of them as if he doesn't. Basically, that's about it. You are presently paying a dollar and twenty-four cents and, and I believe that's right and it has not changed, as I said, since February nineteen eighty-two.
Anyone else have any comments and questions?
Last time I discussed this, they asked me to check the surrounding towns, what they were paying.
Yes, I did, checked, uh, Sealed, two, three, four, about four different places of which I found that our rate were lower than all of them. That's the reason I, I would kind of hesitate to bid, I think, that to do so would, would be more risk and it wouldn't be possible gains. But, you know, we might get a little bit. If we did bid, I would recommend the longer and longest contract possible. If we did bid, I would recommend the longer, longest contract possible.
Well, I certainly can't see rebidding anything from Davis. Just using another landfill, they're paying a dollar seventy cents, and we're only paying a dollar twenty-four cents. And, uh, I'm sure that, uh, we're not going to get a cheaper bid than that, if we can continue the service that we have. And of course, he did not receive an increase. And, uh, I haven't asked him his feelings on that, but he didn't receive an increase when we raised the rates. And it would have been my opinion that he should have received a twenty percent increase if we received a twenty percent increase. But he didn't, and I don't know if, would it, he would would add that into a new bid or not, but, uh, I, you know, our system, when I first came on, I know y'all are not interested in this, but when I came on this council, you couldn't get up and down some of the alleys because of our garbage. And it was literally stacked piled high in the, the, a lot of the streets and whatnot. And we did not have landfill. We got some sites approved out here, south of Veterans Lake, for landfill sites, but it wasn't compatible to the thinking of the park area and adjacent area out there, and to develop and lay garbage, so that was the reason that it was bid. And we have, uh, in my opinion, a, a, a good operation. And so if legally we can stay with that, I would, uh, certainly consider the, the fact that we're going to tear something down that we've had, you know, we've built up, and, uh, it's the, you know, matter of fact, too, you gentlemen signed a petition of recall on me for our present polycar system. And, uh, I think we have one of the best systems in the state of Oklahoma. So I would, I would be real hesitant and start trying to tear it down.
I don't know what the polycars got to do with the landfill.
Well, it's part of your garbage system.
Goes out there in a truck, polycar.
I do want a man to sign the petition.
Well, I might have been.
I know you were.
But he was not, he was not about to lift a system to him, that, that, that question, I don't think. I think it's
I think it states.
The manner that he was handling it. Most people sign that.
It states very clearly in there. Failure to reject the polycar solid waste disposal system at great cost and inconvenience of the citizens and voters in the city. And that's what it states, that's what you signed it.
No, I, I don't, I really still don't see what that's got to do with, with, uh.
Well, it's our trash system, you and I just impested to tear it down.
I don't think it's the, the present system of the landfill. That puts you notice immediately.
Well, it's, it's the type of system they can have. In other words, the other system out here, that they don't take all types of, uh, trash and garbage. He doesn't take old, uh, hot water tanks, for example, old stoves and that sort of thing. So you need to consider these things. It's just not, uh, uh, garbage. It's, uh, other waste, what are we going to do with that? So you need to consider that if you're going to consider the other.
Well, I, I don't, uh.
But, you know, if the voters.
I hadn't thought that's something. You know, be, we haven't been provided with a, a list of dudes who don't need a landfill. Um, I'm at a loss for that type of information right now, but, uh.
I can't, I can't tell you that I, you know, but I did not check that. The whole thing I can tell you is that the Center Landfill contract with Paul Aaron provides for the disposal of really all items normally disregarded by businesses, residents, residences and inhabitants, including wood, uh, logs, tree cuttings, and all that sort of thing. I have no idea what.
Which, which if we had a bid, it would have to be in our specification.
I put that in the specification specifically. If, uh, if the council wants to bid it, uh, I think you sure want to be certain that whoever was, uh, providing the service would, uh, would take all of the garbage. You don't want to, what are you going to do with, what are you going to do with, uh, old hot water tanks or whatever? Or if they won't take, it's been some.
I couldn't tell you last time I saw a water tank in a dumpster. You know, or, or a polycar.
The only time we get those is during cleaning. I think that you got, you got wood, somebody, somebody made mistake at one time, I don't know who it was, that, that there's a possibility that he wouldn't have, Hamper, he did not take, uh, tree limbs or logs or whatever. I have no real idea why. There are some advantages, though, to other areas. We've, uh, you know, uh, currently in there, we have some, uh, rough roads beating in, which is, which is rough on foot and so. There's some managing, disadvantages, you know, anywhere you go. However, uh, really, uh, you know, to be, in my opinion, as long as, and Paul Aaron has expressed a desire to definitely have an increase, but be my opinion that wait until, you know, he demands an increase, and in that time to bid it, you know, whenever he demands an increase. Because a dollar twenty-four that we were currently paying is, uh,
that corporate base, uh, they're paying a dollar seventy per meter. Are they, they paying by liter?
Per bill.
Per bill. That doesn't seem like it was that high when we got there before. I don't recall that favor being.
Well, now Jerry Floretson gave me that much.
What is it?
Uh, about two weeks ago.
And that was a new figure, because we were talking about this, you know, six weeks ago also, or two months ago.
Well, now, he first told me a dollar and a half. And called me back the same day, told me he had, he got it wrong, he looked it up, it's a dollar seven.
Well, I think part of that, and I may be wrong, that I don't think there's an extra charge for turn of falls, that that's included in this dollar seventy, and as a result, the residents of Davis get a free ten minutes to turn of falls, because they're having a paper of garbage removal out there. And I may be wrong, but I believe that reason that's high is because it does include some extra things that they're not charging.
The, uh, I have no idea. I was going to sit here and tell you, uh, I really object to it. We have a contract with the park, City Sulphur does. Uh, I don't know whether, uh, I don't know whether, uh, we pay extra for, for disposal of that trash that's accumulated, what you're talking about, we're talking about turn of falls. It would be very similar type situation, anybody know?
Yeah, we pay, we pay a cinch.
Do we pay, do we pay a fee? I don't have, we done.
I don't buy that, I buy it again, I do.
No, it's by flat contract, I believe.
Yeah.
Five hundred dollars.
Yeah, but we gave, we gave Paul that number of dollars to handle so many loads out there.
Yeah, okay, so we paid him to handle so many loads.
I don't, I can't give you the figure.
Yeah, I don't know, we've had to make various, from month to month. Don't you, I mean, yeah. I, I don't sign that.
I couldn't pay so much, so much that it's paid back.
I have no idea.
I don't know what figures are.
Would you like to take a vote on, um, or what your motion? Who would have a motion for? We, we have to, uh, win.
I feel like that we all can see some sort of, to, like, that's what it is. Be compared. That shit not clean.
You got any other motion?
Yeah, I'm good. I have to, to bid.
Your second?
I'll say.
Okay, the motion is, wait a second, two, that's, that's bid, four, eight, nine, go.
Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
No.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four, absent. Ward five.
Aye.
Okay, that motion is carried by majority vote.
Okay, now, if I can, uh, we, we need to give notice to bidders. Uh, is the council's attitude to, uh, to go along with alternative bidding for one, two, and three years? I, I think that may vary. My brand, and what about including, uh, all refuse or tried to, all refuse generated by the city?
Yes.
Does the council have any problems with cashier's check or bid bond in that twenty-five? I stuck twenty-five hundred dollars in there, and because I can't bill five percent of bid, or, you know, you don't really know what it is, if they bid by water meter or by billing unit. So I stuck twenty-five hundred dollars in there as a bid bond, in the event that, uh, this council lets the bid and successfully betters, someone will take. That sounds better.
I think that should be.
That's good.
I don't know, okay? I usually put in this, I usually, I could, they've noticed a bidder, it's here, I usually put in there that, that you see if sulfur waves, uh, are reserves right to reject in all bids and reserves right to award a bid to the lowest acceptable bid. What about, when do you want to, to have the bids opened?
Hmm, probably next, regular.
Regular meeting?
Not this thing, no. Let me, long enough.
Let me get long enough, bro, any better for you? Or I'll get their bid in.
It's coming out into Sulphur Municipal Authority Council, where you all are right now.
That's where we are.
Okay.
And we, and the authority on the, yeah.
Yeah, we're in this.
Oh, yeah, we, we just go, by the way, we decided, we decided since you were here, you didn't really want to go.
Oh, to that, to Oklahoma City? Well, don't go, we need to turn it down.
No, I don't, I don't remember, bro. We talked about that.
I just want to be educated. That's all. We understand that those things are, sure, it's great.
Probably true anyway. Okay, the, uh, excuse me, that's, uh, pretty well wrap up that? This pretty well wraps up the landfill.
And does it all have something else that you want to put in there?
Nothing I want to. Okay, the, uh, next item is through, uh, thousand seven hundred eighty-one dollar payment, bringing out insurance company, insurance coverage on the garbage truck. We have any questions or discussion?
This is comprehensive and collision on related one, one of the garbage trucks. We've also got our other insurance that, that the council tabled that we never have paid, and we never have that decision. That's a five hundred deductible.
Say it again?
Comprehensive and collision with a five hundred dollar deductible.
Now, what, correct?
On this eighty-one.
Is it, how many garbage trucks you got, three?
Uh, we got four, we got some delivered.
And the last insurance we talked about was on two, right?
And we never had, really had a decision on that, and we had not paid.
We said to the garbage?
No, we just.
I was thinking we decided to, too, right?
The council just gave it. No, we didn't get a vote on that.
Uh?
I don't believe we ever got a vote on that. So we.
We need to check on that, because I think we, we took, that, that our recommendation was made that, that we not carry insurance on that, and we just decided not to, because we were covered already.
That's very deep advice.
Yeah, uh, that's, that's my.
Well, I remember that, but I thought that we just ended, the council ended up on the action, just taking.
Well, I might check your minutes, but I think we, we decided not to.
Okay, should we, uh, consider this or pay it?
Or? What's, what's the value of this truck right now?
It would be less than some of the others, so it would hit.
It says it's an eighty-one model. Those, one of those others was a, was an older model, a less.
How old is it?
Eighty-five, I think. Brad?
Where you going?
This is garbage truck.
Thirty-five.
Where's Simon's truck?
This is not, this is not a fire truck.
This is a dumpster truck?
No, I, I don't even know this one.
Oh, okay, this eighty-one is a polycar truck, truck, okay?
Nah, it's. It's rear holder.
Yeah, it's an half or a four. It's a four.
It is a.
Rear holder.
Polycar.
Polycar.
Any others coming here?
So, I, I'd really like to know how much replacement cost on that. If we total that thing out, how much would this insurance pay of that? Which, that's what we had to move forward, we decided was better off without it.
What is this coverage?
Collision and, and comprehensive, what, five hundred dollar deductible.
Thousand seven hundred eighty-one is the payment. That's your annual, I get it.
Just like, just like what you went to before, when you're talking, and I don't know what you did, but you know, your risk is that, that, that an accident is caused by you or your driver, or you roll the truck down the, uh, the bank and then tear up all of the truck, but the compactor unit as well. And, you know, maybe the council will go and handle it, they've got an eighty-one truck and, and, uh, I'm sure that compactor unit is at least eighty-one model, it or.
Then we get hang with it.
Hang with it, so we've got a unit that's five years old.
A lot of members of the last ones that had a replacement value that the insurance was paying was part of what they were going to pay on. And I, I'm sure that this was maybe the same one. Also got the three trucks to back that truck.
The show's review table is for Freddie Lees.
If, uh, what Ray indicates, that you ought to obtain copy of the policy and find out what the replacement for, uh, payment to, by the insurance, would be approximately.
I mean, this may be a fifty thousand dollar truck to buy a new, but the replacement may be only ten. I said paying seventy hundred dollars for ten thousand dollars of protection.
You only get the twenty thousand dollars in the truck, if that's what you're paying for. Then the time you get depreciation on that, you're not getting much. I have a heart, somebody say.
Now, I believe that they said it at twenty, I'm not sure.
The value? Apparently these things depreciate pretty fast.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably. But it's almost nearly four hundred dollars.
That's what I was thinking, if we're going to pay.
The whole year?
Yeah.
Side of the house, bigger.
Six thousand.
About fifty-six.
Wait, back one bit, six.
So you just got to turn it, have it on trouble with your, or back door. Do I have, do you have a motion to consider or to table this?
I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion if we table this, if we check and see what we can be bought. So I want to consider all of them.
Your second?
Second?
Motion, maybe, so you can have a vote.
Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four, absent, ward five.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries, vote. Uh, we have to do everybody's business and.
Since, since this is a
That's a name.
Different body than the, than the city council, I would. Also here, I'd like to make a statement that my relationship to Murray County Insurance is just one I went to rather than being part of the agency, so that it would be like a dog.
That was true.
You think I'll?
I don't have football, I'm a rock.
Boy, I'm playing Monday night in the corner, we're, this is the reason I'm here.
So we basically watch it.
Put your picture in the valley, I don't know where you're going.
I could care less.
I, uh, yeah, delivery should like.
Somebody can, 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 can.
Paris, dude, I said.
You're in the joint, you're in the joint, folks, we're here in.
Ward one.
Yes.
Ward one.
Did you?
One more.
Aye.
Ward two.
You there?
Ward three. Ward four, yes, and ward five.
I'll hold that.
What do you want? Change.
Yeah.
Mayor, here's a resolution that I have.